Good morning. Good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started if everyone will take their seats. As always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. First, you may notice it's a little warm in here today. So we have some fans going. The air is out in the building, so just bear with us as we get through the agenda in a little bit of heat. I think we are ready to call the March 5 zoning hearing into order. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Peterson to go through our agenda.
And thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance once their case is called. Then we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so we can count them for the official record. After recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked to come forward to be sworn in to present testimony. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time. So you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on an issue, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side gets 10 minutes in total, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn. In this case will not be heard today. That's case Z 64 of 2023 Cedar Real Estate Group 4 LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Additionally, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z 40 of 2023 Atlanta Remediation Group LLC. This case was continued until the April 2, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 40 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 59 of 2023 SS Developers LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 2, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 59 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 60 of 2023 MRE Canton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 2, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 60 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 2 of 2024 Florenory Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 7, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 8 of 2024 Jelani Campbell. This case was continued by the staff until the April 2, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 8 of 2024 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 9 of 2024 Thomas, excuse me, Thomas Orick. This case was continued by the staff until the April 2, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 9 of 2024 will not be heard today. And finally, LEP 7 of 2024 Amy Mullahan. This case was continued by the staff until the April 2, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LEP 7 of 2024 will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman of Board, we did get a request yesterday for continuance. The applicant for SLUP 1 of 2024, the Tire Swing Collective, Inc. has asked for a continuance so they could continue working on their plan. So the staff had asked the board to consider the applicant's request to continue SLUP 1 until the April 2 Planning Commission zoning hearing.
Okay. That SLUP 1 is in District 3, so I will turn it over to Commissioner Dance.
Are you going to make a statement?
Good morning. My name is Brett Panassi. I'm just here to answer any questions. I represent the applicant Tire Swing Collective. We requested a continuance yesterday.
You're requesting the continuance.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson, can we get an early head count on this?
Sure. Can I get a show of people who are here who are opposed to SLUP 1 Tire Swing Collective, Inc. Please stand up and raise your hand. If you're opposed to SLUP 1, please stand and raise your hand.
May I make one statement? There would be more people here except some of the...
How many, Cameron?
We can't take statements, but we'll count everyone that's here right now.
Six. Okay. Madam Chairman of Board, there are six people here opposed to SLEP 1.
And if I can ask the applicant, have you had meetings with the individuals?
We have had several discussions with adjacent neighbors and have responded to several emails, but we have not been able to hold a formal meeting with neighbors. We haven't, actually, I didn't know there were this many people that were going to be here today, so we're happy to continue those discussions.
Okay. And would you be willing to meet with these folks right after this?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. All right. Subject to that, I would move for continuance and ask that you meet with the individuals who are here present.
Second. We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Let's call the question. By vote of five to zero, we will continue SLUP 1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, SLUP 1 was continued until the April 2, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing. If anyone opposed to SLUP 1 wants to talk to the applicant's representative, you can outside the room. Thank you. Okay, before we start the hearing, I do have a few more announcements. Anyone who has a cell phone, please turn your cell phone off as they're ringing and they're answering does interfere to broadcast and presentation. And any person, and I'll remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, the information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing date. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And before we start, do you have three early head counts to call? Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z 52 of 2023 1054 Investment Group LLC? If you're opposed, please raise your hands. Okay, let the record show there's three people here opposed. Is there anyone here in support of rezoning case Z 52? Okay, let the record show there's no one here in support. Next case is rezoning case Z 61 of 2023 David Pearson Communities Incorporated. If you're opposed to Z 61, please stand up and raise your hands. Okay, let the record show there's 10 people here opposed. Is there anyone here in support of rezoning case Z 61? Okay, let the record show there's no one opposed. And lastly, can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z 3 of 2024 Ashwani Kumar Kara? Please stand and raise your hands. Okay, let the record show there's six people here opposed to rezoning case Z 3. And can I also get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z 3? Please stand up and raise your hands. Okay, let the record show there's no one here in support. And before we get going on the consent agenda, Madam, Mr. Chairman of Board, we do have one agenda item to add. It would be a non-agenda item to consider some code amendments. So we would need a four-fifths vote or a five-zero vote to add the non-agenda item to consider the code amendments to the agenda.
So moved.
Second. I have a second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Let's call the question. A vote of five to zero to add the non-agenda item for the code amendments to the agenda.
All right, thank you. All right. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for March 5, 2024. First case on consent is rezoning case Z 4 Big Gym Therapy LLC. Request rezoning from NS to NRC for a gym and fitness facility and administrative offices in Land Lot 278 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Canton Road, north of Kensington Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division dated January 26, 2024. Number two, variances as identified in the zoning comments. Number three, adherence to the Canton Road design guidelines. Number four, fire department comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 4? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z 7 of 2024 Gary D. Walters. Request rezoning from CF to R 20 for a single-family residence in Land Lot 199 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Pine Creek Court, north of Pine Creek Drive. Staff recommends approval. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 7? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman of Board.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And I'll take a second.
A second.
We have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Let's call the question. A vote of five to zero, we recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. All those folks that were on consent, you're approved. You're free to leave. Just come back in two weeks for the Board Commissioner's zoning hearing. Thank you. All right, moving into the held and continued cases. First case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z 52 of 2023 1054 Investment Group LLC. Requesting rezoning from R 20 to LI for contractors' offices and parking of vehicles in Land Lot 204 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Shalford Road, east of Old Shalford Road. The applicant is present, and earlier there were three people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
I think we're ready to go. Go for it. Right, thank you. Good morning. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner of this property. It's located on Shalford Road, just east of Shalford Road's intersection with Canton Road. I'm going to move over to the screen to go over a couple of things with you. But this application deals with property that is currently zoned R 20. This property, though, has not been used residentially for many, many, many years. If you remember, we first heard this case back in November, I believe it was. And since that time, we have undergone cleanup efforts. The owner has undertaken that, a good deal of cleanup efforts there. But there also is the remaining businesses that are active businesses that have been there for quite some time. This application, though, does seek a rezoning initially to light industrial, which would make it consistent with the industrial properties both across the street and to its east. But however, since that time, we have, per our stipulation letter, agreed to delete this request and amend our rezoning request to rezone it to the NRC category as opposed to the light industrial category. It'd be a NRC category for purposes of a specialty contractors that would allow for outdoor storage. We also wanted to make sure that we were consistent with our proposal and what staff had recommended. In this case, staff had recommended deletion to NRC as well for special contractors. In addition, staff had recommended a buffer, and we'll show you here also where that buffer would go as it relates to our adjoining residential neighbors. So let me kind of give you a further history and context in the surrounding area so you can have a familiarity with where this is. Turning now to the sheet on your screen. This is Canton Road here and Shalford Road. There says the railroad tracks here. This is the subject properties that we are here today about that are zoned R 20. What you can see in the surrounding area as you come down Shalford Road at the intersection, these are NRC uses and NRC zonings. But once you move past this intersection, all of this area that you see in purple is either zoned heavy industrial across the street, which is Shalford Road here, or light industrial, Shalford Road and light industrial. So you have light industrial and heavy industrial that surrounds this property in that, on that side. However, to the rear along GDN Lane, which is this area here, is R 20, which is to the rear of this property. You also have the GC zonings that are located here and here. This portion of the property, or this not portion, but the entirety of this property and this area along the south side of Shalford Road is within a neighborhood activity center and thus staff's recommendation to delete to NRC, which would be consistent with that future land use category, as well as our agreement to delete this request to NRC to be compliant and consistent with your future land use plan. The properties themselves, as I stated before, and these properties have not been used residentially for decades. These properties have been used in a commercial and almost industrial-type fashion for special contractor-type uses, for outside storage, and that has gone on for many years. That's how this particular owner bought the properties. They were being used and moving forward like that, in that fashion. And we find this case to be in different places across the county where properties have been used for any number of years but aren't zoned for that use. What we're now trying to do with these properties, though, is bring these in so they can be zoned properly, have proper stipulations and conditions so that they can be used in accordance with a consistent zoning. Turning to what is the plan. Again, this is Shalford Road here.
Can you flip it for us? It's upside down.
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Now, back to orient with the plan and the properties. This is Shalford Road here. Here are the subject properties with the various buildings that are located on the properties being used for those uses. To the rear of these properties, especially in this area here, is residential that I was pointing to, this existing residential that's located here. What we are proposing to do is then come into the rear of this property and create a 30, minimum 35-foot landscape buffer. We would also be willing to install fencing to assist in that from a visual standpoint. That fencing would be black or green vinyl-coated chain-link fence, but opaque, meaning it'd have to have screening or slats within the fencing so that it provides for a visual barrier as well as a clean one, along with a very substantial landscape buffer that would have to be planted through here. This area does have some existing trees and landscape, but it's not a planted landscape. It's just existing trees and woods type of material that's throughout this boundary here. But what we would be able to do is come in and put in a full 35-foot landscape buffer, which would involve the planting of evergreen trees that, within two years of planting, would provide for 100% visual screening, which is the buffer standard per Cobb County ordinance, which is something that's not present now. This would allow this property to move forward as NRC for special contractor use. Those types of uses would also involve certain elements of outside storage, which we have requested as well because that's the existing businesses do utilize that. There's one business that is a, business one is an auto mechanic business that's been there for many years. There's another business as well that has containers that are moved on and off-site as part of their business, as well as outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment. But we believe with this installation of the landscape buffer and fencing that we will be able to provide for adequate screening and more than sufficient screening to the adjoining residents, as well as that would create buffer in terms of space and distance of 35 feet currently. One of the issues had been a lot of this area along the property line, as we noted in the prior hearing, had been used for people that were simply just storing material back there, letting it just not be cleaned up and rather offensive to the neighbors understandably. This would enable that to no longer be the case so that that would be prevented in its entirety. And as we stated prior, at the prior hearing, it was important for us, once we learned about the issues that were there, to get them to take a lot of action, to do some cleanup work there, to make sure that that type of debris, trash, or whatever you want to call those items that were along that area, to be removed. Again, I think it's also important to consider that these are, exist, are three existing businesses. Those businesses have been in place for quite some time. Those are businesses that feed those families and that provide for their livelihoods. Those businesses, however, do have an obligation and a duty, from my standpoint and from the applicant's standpoint, though, to conduct their business in a manner...
Two minutes.
...to conduct their business in a manner that is clean, that provides for sensitivity to residential neighbors. And we think we can do that with the stipulations that we now have in place as well. This is an application that attempts to ensure that existing businesses can continue to be there, that the properties will continue to, can continue to be used in a commercial manner like they have been for so many years, especially given its surrounding area. Where this fronts onto Shalford Road, if you drive down this stretch of Shalford Road, what you see are light industrial, heavy industrial types of businesses. You see special contractor types of businesses. That's what this stretch of Shalford Road is. That's what the stretch of Shalford Road has been. I mean, across, directly across the street is a porta potty business. That's fine. We all need those at some point or the other, and businesses need those at some point or the other. Doesn't mean it's a bad business, but what it means is that's the type of business. You have special contractors, other types of businesses such as that, that are along this stretch of road. What we want to make sure we're trying to do here, though, is do it in a manner that is clean and that is sensitive to the neighbors to our south. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and respectfully request your recommendation of approval, subject to our most recent stipulation letter, which identified these issues for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll now hear from the opposition. You have a total of 10 minutes as well.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. I'm speaking on behalf of two residents that have lived in this area for most of their lives and own property directly contiguous to subject property. I am going to roll the video and try to just, okay. This is the, this is the aerial GIS.
Ms. Brown, can you speak more into the mic just because...
This is the aerial GIS of subject property, and these are the homes that are contiguous to subject property. As you can see, quite nice homes, a viable neighborhood. This is another aerial close-up of the back of subject property showing numerous containers and debris. This was, that was taken in 2003, I believe. This came in as a result of a code enforcement complaint, which is why it is in rezone. Otherwise, it wouldn't be here. This was taken from the backyard of one of the residents, and this shows the extent of the containers on the back lot. This is an empty oil drum right next to the Little Noonday Tributary Creek, as well as, it's accompanied by a tire, an old tire. So generally, this area is still not in great shape and probably some environmental issues. And you can just watch this video, just showing, I mean, there are scores and scores of roll-off dumpsters and bins. And it, I believe the company name on that is MTC, which I'm guessing is Magic Touch Construction. And part of what they do is to haul waste in that are from junk houses and debris from demolition. And this is, I believe, a bobcat operating, showing the heavy lifting that they do of these bins. This was just taken a few days ago. This is not, this is not months ago before the cleanup started. This is, this is just over the past weekend. It's, it's six o'clock in the morn, well, there's audio with this, which I can't hear, but you can hear all the clanging that you would expect to hear with this kind of activity. Thank you. In addition to the industrial uses on a residentially zoned property, clearly, this is waste transfer. And I believe that if they intend to continue these types of businesses, they should have filed a SLUP. I, you know, that's just, that is my opinion for a waste transfer, but I don't know that they're going to continue that. And I can, I can attest to the fact that they do intend to continue these uses because, as he said in the past, and if you, if you read his revised letter of stipulation, they want to clean this up, but they intend to continue these uses. And the problem with that is, if you're deleting this to NRC, they have agreed to the 35, this was, okay, this was taken in, this was an aerial shot from 2015, and I think the last slide is going to be one from 2003. So this has been going on for a long time. And if you're going to delete this to NRC, there are some things that also your staff recommendation said, no outside storage and no heavy equipment, among other things. So I'm just going to read this, I'm going to read this to you. No heavy equipment over 12,500 pounds, 35-foot landscape screening buffer with an eight-foot wood privacy fence installed between the tree buffer and next to the outbuildings. No outside storage, no inoperative vehicles or vehicles without tags, no auto salvaging and wrecking yards, no automobile storage yards and wrecker services for damaged or confiscated vehicles, no uses that emit noxious odors, fumes, or... services for damaged or confiscated vehicles, no uses that emit noxious odors, fumes, or sounds are permitted, light automotive repair only per NRC code, landscape contractor offices, no vehicles over twelve thousand five hundred pounds, no transfer of vegetative waste onsite or outdoor storage of landscape materials without a slump. Deny the following variances, number two, reduce the rear setback from the required thirty feet to zero feet. Um, waive required landscape screening buffer when abutting residentially zoned property from fifty feet to zero feet, and increase the maximum impervious surface from seventy percent to approximately eighty-five. Staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict, particularly as it relates to improvements to the property triggered by the land disturbing activity. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, seven-thirty AM to five-thirty PM, Saturday, eight-thirty AM to one PM. Uh, while these requests may seem onerous, it will give the owner an economic use of the property, but will end the intense illegal uses of the property that have unfairly burdened the adjacent homeowners for so many years. And I will submit for the record the earlier handwritten petition, and I'm gonna wait till the Board of Commissioners owning to submit the other one. Uh, Ms.?
Good morning, um, my name's Janice Ducklove, and my grandparents bought this land when, well, before I was here, and um, my father developed a subdivision, and I'm explaining the relationship, the handshake that my father uh built homes for people, and back in the day, we believed in honesty and trust and handshakes. And Mr. Weatherby, I always thought, and still hope, is a very nice man. Uh, some people get into money and their own agenda, and ours is about having a nice family neighborhood, and that land that is behind the woods is meant to be for other family members or friends that want to build a home there. And as it is, the people that are living there don't even want to live there because of this. And it's not just the six o'clock in the morning, Saturday, Sunday morning, and all the noise, it's also, we literally have to run to our car to keep from getting bitten by mosquitoes, and that creek, which is supposed to be um, from God's point of view, for vegetation to, for, it's there for a reason, it's not to put um oil and junk and trash, and this is our lives. And I think if any of you would just come and look in our backyard and see, and it's right up to our yard, okay, thirty-five foot buffer, that's nice, and it's nice trees, but it's not gonna take away the um problems, the rodents, the mosquitoes, and the awful looking mess, and like my son said earlier, one of those trucks could just come right through the fence and, you know, hit one of our grandchildren or something, it's just, um, it's literally making me sick. And the, Mr. Weatherby told me that he was going to get rid of the tall RVs, and he was going to sell them, and then he promised me he would get rid of the uh renters that were, I don't believe they're, they were official permitted uh renters, welders, all kinds-
You have, you have two minutes, two minutes.
I'm sorry, okay. So anyway, um, this is, this is the thing that I, it's taken away from our land, not just our use, but our, the value, and I'm sorry it takes so long.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Brandon Duck, and she's my mother. I, I grew up living in that house, there's, and playing in the backyard, I had a swing set, um, my, my children now play there, my mother takes care of them, um, I'll go over there and I'm just concerned, they can't even go in the backyard, because literally within ten seconds, in the summertime, mosquitoes are, have covered them up. But I can go to my house, which is, you know, maybe a hundred, uh, two-hundred feet away, and they're, they're not there, there are no mosquitoes over there. All the mosquitoes are all in my mom's yard, front yard, backyard, but as soon as you get over across the street, far enough away, they're, the mosquito problem is not there, it's non-existent. And, I mean, I, we don't, we used to go over there for barbecues, I grew up there, um, went to high school there, graduated nineteen ninety, I would have friends that would come down through that section of land from Shallowford, and we actually would throw the football back there where all this construction is. There were nice homes, there were trees, all that's just been eradicated, now, now it's just a wasteland. Um, I walked down to the creek the other day and took the pictures of the old drum, um, the tire that's there, um, you can see purple and rainbow, the, the creek has, is full of oil. I've been out there at times where the, the creek is, is orange, almost looks like it has nuclear waste or something, I don't know what it is, um, some type of algae, um, very concerning, alarming, and we, we stay away from that area, um, where all the noise, the, there's so much noise pollution-
Time has expired. And that's time, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. This is uh in District Three, so I will turn it to Commissioner Dance to lead our discussion.
Thank you, if, if I could get code enforcement, please.
Good morning, you're Lisa Flossing, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Good morning, um, can you give us the background on the code enforcement at this location and what the current status is of the cleanup?
We currently have an active case, we opened a case in February of uh twenty twenty-three due to shipping containers in the backyard, um, the property is not zoned for business, it's zoned for residential, so the officer issued a notice of violation for customary home occupation, um, along with um, along with outside storage. Uh, the property was recently inspected on February twenty-seventh, and the officer found that um some of the equipment has been removed, but there's still a great deal of trucks and dust, dumpsters and equipment on the property as they're um running a business at the property. So there has been a little bit cleanup, but there still is a lot on there. And as far as our photos compares to theirs, we have um, we're at a legal limit of how much of the property we can inspect. Like, if we get permission to inspect the full property, we can do so, uh, or if they walk us around the property, but um their pictures compared to ours is a little different since they're taking their pictures from a different point of the property.
When you're saying they are taking their pictures, are you talking about the owner or are you talking about the-
I'm referring to the complainant.
Okay.
Their pictures are gonna look a little different, cause you can see in their pictures, like, they um have pictures from a drone perspective, we don't. We have um, we inspect the property from the front, and if the owner's there or somebody allows us access on them, we can completely walk onto the property, but without appropriate access, we cannot see everything. But we do see that they did clean up a little bit, but they're in violation as they're not zoned for occu- um, for running a business from this property as it's zoned for residential.
Okay, and so what's necessary for you to complete a full inspection of the property?
I, I can't hear you, ma'am.
What's, what's necessary for you to complete a full inspection of the property?
We would either have to have um permission from either the property owner, the business owner, or the neighbors. If the neighbors can allow us to access from their property for us to see everything within the property, then that will give us a, a better idea, but we did see the pictures that um were provided by um the Canton Neighbors.
Okay, and you saw those pictures that were shown here today?
Yes, I did.
Okay, those, those are not what you have seen from your own inspection, is that correct?
Some of it is and some of it is not, because um they have a different view than us. We, we're at a limit of how much of the property we can view, so we do see that there is a little cleanup, but at the end of the day, from a code enforcement perspective, the property's in violation because the property is not zoned for running this type of business at the property.
Okay. So with respect to uh some of the issues that have been brought up as to hours of operation, do you know what the hours of operation are currently?
I'm not sure what the hours of operation is, is that's something that code enforcement does not enforce at all.
Okay, um, are you aware of what the noise levels are?
We don't enforce the noise, the noise ordinance is enforced by Cobb County Police.
Okay, and how, how about issues like uh environmental issues as to the water and the-
Those are all different, um, like the health department or um stormwater, we, we only enforce uh the ordinance, and we're not allowed to even give a recommendation as it would come from zoning and all the other departments that's involved with it. Our only standpoint is that we're allowed to uh enforce Cobb County's ordinance.
Okay, so if you were to conduct a more uh, a full property inspection, what would be the limitations of your authority?
We would only address what's in Cobb County ordinance, the property is zoned for um residential, so the business is not there, allowed there at all. The items being stored outside is not allowed at all, working on vehicles or any type of activity conducted there is not allowed at all. So um they would be in violation of everything that's listed in our ordinance, we look for litter, we look for um operating a business, storing items outside, uh, there is a um, you know, a re- a temporary residential um dumpster ordinance, so there's quite a few things, we do a detailed ordinance, and we don't only address what it is that was complained about, but we address everything that we observe at the property during the time of our inspection.
Okay, and do you know uh for how long this business has operated at this location?
I cannot answer that question, because this business would um, in order for them to receive a business license, they would have to be zoned properly, so I don't, I'm not sure, but I can um get in contact with the office and give you an answer.
Okay, and how long would that take?
I just need to make a phone call to the office and I can give you an answer.
Okay, um, all right, um, does anyone else have questions for?
Other questions, code enforcement, Commissioner Bellone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just very briefly, we saw some pictures from like two thousand and three, can, can you comment on whether, when you saw those pictures, whether things are currently as, as bad as what was depicted in oh-three, or are things better?
As far as when we first received the complaints and now, they cleaned up some, but they're still in violation. So uh the officer recently did the inspection, they moved some of the equipment off. When we first started the case, um, yes, there were horrible conditions, and um at our last hearing, the uh complainant had pictures of showing the conditions of the property. Yes, they have made a little effort to progress, but we're still completely in violation at this time.
Okay, and then just looking at the picture, the visual in front of us on the overhead, uh, sadly you see me right now, but uh, the, the picture I'm looking at anyway, uh, it looks like the property to the left of the screen, uh, which I guess would be the westernmost property, is, is relatively clean compared to the other two, is that, is that a fair assessment, or can you comment on that?
Yes, there's no trash on the property, the property looks much neater and cleaner, yes. So they, they, yes, they are making the effort, but they're not in compliance, yes.
Other questions, code enforcement?
No, um, would you be able to make that call while, while we-
Yes, ma'am, I can do that right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, i- if I can have some um opponents or individuals who are present to speak against the proposal, perhaps the property owners?
Oh, you mean uh Mrs. Duck and Brandon Duck?
Yes.
Okay.
So you indicated that this was owned by your family for a number of years?
I'm sorry.
This was owned by your family for a number of years?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and how, how far back does that go?
I really don't know.
If I were to guess, I would say in the fifties.
Okay, and um the, the current use of this property for these industrial or commercial purposes, how long has that been in existence?
Well, Mr. Weatherby had an office and a home office, and there wasn't anything there, and um, and then there was a house, and it was like that for years and years and years. And then um, we just, I guess, maybe right after my husband passed, I started realizing it was getting a lot worse, you know, didn't, didn't know exactly what all was going on, and then um, and then my neighbor, she um, she wrote something, she actually, her parents lived there and it was all raised really nice, they came in nineteen seventy-two, and then she lived there for a few years after um she had gotten a divorce, and then after her parents ended up passing away there. And there wasn't anything like that going on, I mean, it was just like a nice little construction office with, without, there was none of that. And, I mean, I don't know exactly when it all happened, I had a lot going on in my life. My husband was sick for a while, and I was going back and forth to Emory, and my life was really busy as far as looking out, you know, but there was trees there, then they cut them all down, and I can't remember, I was asking my uh previous neighbor, I said, when was it they cut all those trees down? And she said, I don't know, remember the neighborhood was covered up with wolf rats? And I said, yes, I remember that. And um, so it wasn't, it's not been going on for twenty-five years, it has not.
Okay.
Can I go back to the original question on the ownership of the land?
Yeah.
Um, I was mistaken, that's when our neighborhood was built, but their property owned, they owned the land way before then, they actually had a plantation house that served as a hospital during the Civil War, which had been torn down, I believe in the eighties. Um, so they, we've, our families owned this land uh hundreds of years, so I don't know the exact time when they initially took-
Okay, and then with respect to when the condition of the adjoining land became what it is now, when, when did that occur?
I would, I know for a fact, when I was in high school and graduated from high school, like I had said earlier, friends would come over and we'd walk through the meadow, um, and there were, you know, trees, and we'd walk up to, there was a Southern Eleven gas station there at one time, um, none, none of that was there. Uh, Mr. Weatherby just had a home office that looked exactly as a home, a residence. You would have never known that any of that was going on, it was nice, clean, we used to throw the football in the, where you see all the containers, we'd go out there, throw football, play football, climb the trees, um, just, you know, had a great time. Um, and it just happened in little at a time, it's just, you know, taking, you know, inch here, inch there, and just before you knew it, it just had overtaken the whole place, and then once they got to a certain level, they just went nuts and just, you see what you have there today.
And so who instituted the, um, did y'all bring a complaint with code enforcement?
We didn't even make that, well, actually, uh, my previous neighbor did, but I don't think anyone ever came out, um, so I'm not sure who did the, the most recent one.
Okay.
But see, the reason I didn't call them is because the way my mother, I found out Mr. Weatherby was sick, and he made all those promises, and after my late, my previous neighbor saw that he wasn't gonna keep any of those promises, she just said, well, I, I've gotta leave, so she sold her house. And um, so it was been, and she was buying it because it was sentimental to her, and she saw that it was just, you know, getting, being a mess, she said, why are you putting up with this? And I said, well, he said he's a nice man, and he's been sick, and I was like, taking up for the man. I didn't know it was as bad as it was, until we started just getting all these problems with um the animals and the mosquitoes and, and the noise-
We couldn't see with a veil.
We built a porch, and that's when I really started noticing on, um, on the weekend, we would be out Sunday morning listening to Charles Stanley, and we couldn't hardly hear it, because it was so noisy, and it would start early in the morning.
So had, what are the hours that the noise occurs?
Pardon?
What hours is there noise?
Before daylight, um-
Yeah.
It could be five, six AM in the morning. Um, this past Sunday, um, I was outside, and I don't even live in her house, I live, you know, quiet distance, and I can hear they're banging on stuff and just-
Welding, I think.
I don't know what all they're doing, but um, and then the other thing is, I'm just, I don't understand how, if they have an active case with code enforcement since twenty, or two thousand, what, three, how it's still, is the case still active, because they never um met what they needed to meet? How did, how did it not get resolved?
He told me he was gonna get rid of those businesses. He told me he was going to get rid of those businesses. It was like, I don't think they were a real business, they just like rented from him and did whatever welding or whatever they did. I don't think it was like a, what you'd call a real business.
Well, people lived back there too, or at least they did.
People lived back there and had parties and.
They were, they were living in storage containers and things like that.
The people?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, so currently though, you have noise at, what type of hours? You, you have it early in the morning until?
Oh, that video was taken at 6:00 AM.
No, no, not that one. There was a video, you can't see because it's dark, but you can hear audio, that we have, we haven't submitted it, but there, they start probably around 5:00 AM because they get all their trucks going. I would say 4:30 to 5:00 AM, and that goes on until probably 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night.
There's over 100 containers.
So there are multiple businesses, so not all of them are going those hours, but there's always noise. Anytime I'm awake or over there, there's noise, there's always noise, it's never quiet.
So have, have you all spoken to the applicant here about these matters? I know that you, you said that you just kind of let it happen over time. Have you more recently spoken to anyone about these issues?
Yes, and they put a fence up and put, it's probably 10 feet tall.
For 10?
It's like a, like you'd see around a tennis court, they put one of those fences up for a partial to block our view, basically to hide what they're doing. We had no idea the extent of what they had done behind there. But now that code enforcement has forced them to clean up some, they've, because they had stuff, actually they had their wooden fence was collapsing and falling into our yard, and that's when we went to Mr. Weatherby, and people had run through the fence with their trucks, and actually, that's why I'm concerned about my daughters. So they had actually knocked holes in the fence with the vehicles. So we went to Mr. Weatherby, he said, "We'll, we'll put a fence up, we're going to clean this up, you don't have anything to worry about, I'm going to take care of it." My mom is, she, she took him for his word, and she's like, "Well, he's a good man, he will do it." And they put the fence up, the noise never stopped, it actually got worse, and so here we are. So what I was saying, when that, when code enforcement had them clear out that buffer against the fence, well now there was no longer anything to protect the fence from the wind, so the wind has ripped the fence out, so that's how we had the video, so we can actually see in what's going on from our property now, and it's pretty disgusting.
Okay.
I just don't even want to know that things like that are going on right behind me, and I don't know what's in those containers, but we're, we're thinking it's really not anything that we want to know.
All right, does anyone else on the board have questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have another question we'd like to ask you two. We, we are hearing this reference to.
Well, yeah, so we heard a reference to 2003, and I think that was because in the video we saw a picture from 2003. But when was the, when was the complaint with the current case that's open? Was it 2023?
2023.
2023.
In February, yes. There has been prior cases, and I just reviewed all of those cases that they referenced. The issue with code enforcement is, is when we come out to addressing a violation, we issue a notice of violation, the owner is given a certain time of compliance. Every time that we have come out, they have complied. Once they comply, we close the case out. So yes, there have been other things that have occurred at the property, but we do close out. As far as the noise, we don't enforce the noise ordinance, so we do not have control over the ordinance. And to answer your question about how long this business has been here, being that they do not have a business license, we cannot tell how long that they've been here. The business owner would have to tell you how long that they've been operating a business at that property.
So when you con, when you conduct an investigation based upon complaints, being that there is no business license, what, what are the standards that you were looking to determine whether or not they are satisfied or violated?
When those cases came in, those cases was not in regards to a business. One of the cases was to the nature of four different families living at the property. That's not an issue of a business being ran, that's an issue of single-family dwelling, because with the property being zoned for residential, under single-family dwelling, you're allowed to have one family at the property, not four. So that was one of the issues. So every issue that came, whether if there was a non-compliant vehicle, there was a vehicle without tag that had to be removed, that was removed and everything. So every issue that has come up, we have, we have addressed. Now, after the timeframe of those complaints, a business came to the property, and that's where we are today with trying to either get this business to move or to get the property rezoned to appropriately run the business from this property.
Okay, and, and based upon the inquiry that you made during the break, what was your findings?
I, I didn't hear.
Based upon the inquiry you made at, at your break, what were your findings?
We would have to ask the business owner, when did he come to the property and started running the business, because the business is not running legally in the county because there is no active business license currently.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
The only question I had is on, on the prior inspections, was the, was permission granted by the, by the owner to actually access the premises?
You said for fire?
No, on the prior visits from code enforcement, was permission granted to act? I know you had said there's limits to the scope, like you kind of can only examine it from the front of the property usually.
Mm-hmm.
It depends on whether the neighbor or the owner grants access to come in. On any of those prior visits, was such access granted?
No, when the officer came, you know, the officer was able to look from the front and, and get photos and everything, but as far as speaking with the business owners, sometimes their employees there or things of that nature, or they're not open yet. But as far as, we can schedule a date and time to meet with the business owner or the property owner to conduct the inspection and figure out what needs to be removed, but with that being said, this property is not zoned for a business, so if they're not allowed to conduct the business, they would have to remove everything.
Yep. Great, thank, thank you, that was the main question I had.
Okay.
Any further questions for code enforcement?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could get Mr. Moore to come forward, please. Hey Kevin, can, can you provide us a background of, of what happened at this site and how it developed over time and when these uses came into play?
Sure. Based on what I know, or what's been communicated to me, I've only been dealing with the property since last year, so, and the owner since last year, but what's been communicated to me, I think if you look back at the picture, for example, that was from 2003 that you saw, so we, I mean, what's been communicated to me is it's at least been that long since businesses, different, various types of businesses have been on this property and been operating on this property. The description of those businesses, I think is best as contractor, specialty contractor that would have outside storage of equipment and those types of things, that, and then it, it looks like it also evolved into, there's an auto mechanic in one of the buildings and is a current, is one of the current uses. You saw the use with the containers, which I mentioned, that's a more recent, I would say. By recent, within the last several years, those are empty containers, just want to make sure there's not a question about that, that there's not a transfer of waste or anything of that nature going on. But the, I think it's obvious that the, the uses of the property, the business uses, the commercial uses evolved over time, but go back a good number of years. I think that code enforcement is exactly right. The code problem is because there's a business operating on, or businesses operating on property that is zoned residentially. That creates the code enforcement issue and the code violation, which is why when, when that notice, not a citation, but when the notice was given, then the steps were put in place to move forward with this application, which would then put in place, at this point, what we're proposing is NRC zoning with appropriate stipulations and conditions that the, that the property, businesses and owner would have to come into compliance with. So that's the evolution. The effort today, or the effort of this application is so we can bring the property into compliance with zone, with a appropriate zoning category and appropriate conditions.
So can you tell us, can you tell us what kind of meetings have occurred with the adjacent property owners? Have there been any?
No formal meetings, no.
Okay, because it, well, I'll just keep that observation to myself, go ahead.
I have no problem speaking with or meeting with, meeting with the adjacent owner whatsoever. We see what we can work out, but I mean, I think.
One, one follow-up, Kevin. You heard the Canton neighbors' stipulations, and, and just want to get your reaction to the stipulations and what you heard based on that. And is the applicant willing to adhere to any of those stipulations, or do you have a comment about the stipulation?
I think the, the list that, those weren't sent to me, but they, but I did listen to what Mr. Brown recited. I think the, some of the stipulations, I believe, go too far, but I think some of the stipulations or proposed conditions would be agreeable, some that we are already agreeing to.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Anderson.
Kevin, do you happen to know the three businesses that are there? Are they on leases with the owner right now?
Correct.
Okay, and then, is that something, do you know how long those leases have been in place by any chance?
I do not.
Okay.
I can't imagine they're the long-term leases, but.
I imagine they're like month-to-month type deals, but.
Could be, but I know they are leases with, with the owner, yes.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask is because I think, I don't know what the language or how formalized those leases were, but I, I would imagine that as a condition of that lease, there, there's an obligation on some part to kind of maintain compliance or secure a business license. So my only thought that, coming to that is that in terms of relocating these tenants, if, if these leases are even valid, is certainly a question that comes to mind. But that's just, just a thought that I was thinking about in the broad context of things. But, thank you, that was the only question slash comment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have additional questions they need to make of anyone else? No, not at this time, so back to Commissioner Depp.
I appreciate everybody's time and attention and presence. Obviously, I think what we've heard is a, a problem that's may prematurely be here because it seems to me that there are some conversations that need to occur with the residential neighbors, and some discussions that need to happen. I think what Mr. Moore presented at the outset is a noble goal, which is to come up with a plan that protects and preserves the residential character of the neighborhood and the interests in property that each of those individuals have. And I think that that needs to happen in a, in a dialogue outside of this room, and prior to, prior to it being brought back. I also believe that a full inspection of the property needs to be permitted by both the homeowners and, the residential owners and also the applicant, so that we can have a full understanding of the scope and the nature of the issues. And then I believe that we need to have some reporting as to what actions have been taken, what actions are intended to be taken. And I would also say that when these discussions happen, there need to be very specific considerations that, that respect the property rights and, and values of the individuals who were on the property as residential tenants or residential owners for, for more than one lifetime. So matters not just such as landscaping, but as to environmental concerns need to be fully explored, and as to what uses of the property for the purposes of a business need to be carefully calculated. So I think that there's work that needs to be done, and for that reason, I, at this time, am going to recommend a. A hold of this matter with, with direction, that the matters that I've previously discussed be followed through, that these meetings occur with the, the residential owners and the applicant, that there be a fully developed plan for if this is to move forward in a matter that is rezoned, that there be a full plan as to how it's to be accomplished, that this full inspection of the property occur by the county, and that all of that information be brought back to this board for further consideration.
Second?
I have a second, Commissioner Bellone, any discussion? If not, let's call the question. I have a vote of five to zero to hold Z52 until next Montairee. Thank you. Yep. And Kevin, oh, I see Kevin, can you try to meet with them before, before they leave today?
I'll get in touch.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to stay, stop here and take a five, five-minute break, and we will resume at 10 after. Thank you. All right. Welcome back to the March 5th zoning hearing, and we are moving through the agenda, and I will turn it back to Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Next case is rezoning case Z-61 of 2023. David Pearson Communities Incorporated requests a rezoning from RM12, R20, CRC, and NS to RM12 for a townhome community in land lots 421, 422, 443, and 444 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Atlanta Road, north of Daniel Drive. Earlier, there's 10 people here opposed, and it's my understanding two more came in, so there's 12 people opposed. The applicant is present. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application. This application involves a total of eight-point, almost 8.3 acres located off Atlanta Road at Daniel Drive, very close to city limits of Smyrna. This property, which is highlighted on your screen for you, enjoys a variety of zoning classifications. Currently, this property is zoned RM12. There's two portions of the property that are zoned RM12. A portion of the property is zoned R20. Most of it is zoned R20. Also, a portion of the property is zoned CRC, as well as NS. So it's a variety of categories. We are proposing to rezone the property, though, to the RM12 classification for a townhome development that would be consistent with the RM12 classification, that a portion of this property is already zoned, as well as what's occurred in the surrounding area. But to get a little more detail about this surrounding area, if you look again at your screen, you see the property that's highlighted. Atlanta Road is to your right. What you notice is this property is directly adjacent to what is noted as RM12. That's an apartment complex, Belmont Crossing Apartment Complex. It's been there for many, many, many years. It's zoned RM12, but in fact, it's just over 19 units per acre as part of that apartment complex. It was when it was actually built. So it is, but it is RM12, and it is multifamily apartments. To the north of, another side of that property, is FST. That's a newer development. That's a townhome development on the opposite side of the apartments that is zoned FST as a townhome development there. What we are proposing on our property, though, is RM12 at 11.6 units per acre for a townhome community. I want to also make sure you, highlight for you, if you'll see, the RM12 portion of the property that fronts on Atlanta Road that's just over an acre where Daniel Drive comes out, that portion of the property was the subject of a prior rezoning action. That property was submitted for rezoning for a gas and convenience store, which was ultimately denied by the Board of Commissioners. It was then headed to court, and there was a lawsuit involved, ultimately, which was settled and resolved. It was resolved by rezoning that property to RM12 for townhomes at that location for that just over one-acre tract on the front there. So it's zoned RM12 for townhomes as part of its settlement. What we are proposing to do is simply have the remainder of this property also zoned RM12 for townhomes. So that's where the consistency with that aspect of it comes from. I want to turn now to the site plan itself and go over that with you. Turning now to the site plan. Again, this is that RM12 piece that's existing that I just explained. This is Daniel Drive and Atlanta Road. One of the key points to the settlement and rezoning of this property up front to RM12 was that there was no access to Daniel Drive. We've certainly continued to honor that to make sure there is no access to Daniel Drive. The access provided for, per that settlement was to Atlanta Road. I also want to highlight for you, this portion of the property here and this portion of the property here are also included. Those are actually like frontage pieces to the apartments which are here. Those two tracts, though, are a part of this property, those separated, zoned NS and CRC. What we're proposing to do is have townhomes be a part of those two parcels as well. The townhome community is, would be in this orientation with a street. These would be private streets. In addition, we have provided for a full buffer along the southerly portion of the property. That was also a change that occurred for this proposal. Initially, that buffer was not included. Due to revisions to the site plan, we now have a full buffer that we are providing for along the southern portion of this property, and that's part of our stipulations as well. This property has been through the review by DOT in terms of its traffic study. Traffic study was accepted by DOT as well, and I want to make sure that was included. We will be providing for a deceleration lane here, as well as coordination at this location for these townhomes as well in terms of its driveway and access there. And you can also see, once we can show you here, the existing apartments that adjoining this property and which affect its future development very, very much. Again, these apartments are at 19 and 1/2 units per acre for this apartment tract here. What we have done with this proposal, though, is, as opposed to bringing it in for multifamily, bringing it in for a for-sale townhome community, which we think is far better in terms of the step-down and transition to the residential areas off of Daniel Drive, as well as ensuring consistency with the zoning decision that's already been made by the Board of Commissioners for the frontage piece that is zoned RM12 by the Commissioners for townhomes at the front of this property. And we believe this proposed rezoning is consistent with what's adjoining this property, is consistent with prior decisions by the Board of Commissioners to resolve the frontage piece. It's entirely consistent with that zoning decision, a part of which this property is included as well. We have provided for stipulations via our stipulation letter dated February 22nd, which provide for the types of stipulations and conditions you would expect for a qualitative development of townhomes, townhome community, for-sale townhome community that would include a full homeowners association and mandatory covenants to ensure the quality goes forward as well. I can answer any questions that you may have, and respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners subject to our stipulations dated February 22nd, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Let's now hear from the opposition.
My name is Elizabeth Hardy. My sister Allison and I bought our first home on Daniel Drive about four years ago. We're also Smyrna natives and both manage businesses in the heart of downtown Smyrna. I know this area is growing. I'm excited for the growth, both for my personal property and for my business. I feel like we have a sweet spot here in between downtown Smyrna and downtown Marietta. And I know, I talk to everyone, and this area is an area that people are coming to. Young families are coming from the city to move here and start their families. And I think that this area is one of the few areas, maybe the only area, that's still kind of affordable for single-family homes that these young families are looking for. So with that being said, we have a lot of concerns for the intensity, for the intense density of this project in general. I'm concerned for the setbacks. So I know he mentioned that they did a 35-foot setback along our homes. In the stipulation letter, it does drop that down to 25 feet. It also says it's open space, and I'm concerned because I think the patios for these townhomes would be in that area. And for my home in particular, I'm on a hill, so if you put a fence around it and you have a three-story townhome, I have a wall now of townhomes peering down into my backyard, so all of my privacy would be gone. Also, he mentioned the townhomes to the north. That is a nice development. I think it was really good for this area. The acreage on that property is 8.98 acres, and when it was originally proposed, they wanted to do 59 townhomes there. And when it went through this process, it was dropped down to 53 townhomes. So we have 53 units on 8.98 acres. This property includes a pavilion, a dog park, recreational areas. It's gated, it's very straightforward, very nice. Our property is total, it's like all weird and spread out, but the total acreage is 8.277 acres, and they are proposing almost double, so 96 townhomes on this strip. And as he stated, the apartments are over capacity. The reason for that is because the tract that the apartments are on and this little strip that runs in between our homes and the apartments was originally one-tracked, and the full acreage was used to, for the density of the apartments. Ken will explain it better, but there are parts of the apartments actually on the property behind my home, such as sewage and parking lot. So for keeping that in mind, you can, there's no buffer or no setbacks for the apartments. And then if you have reduced setbacks for the townhomes, that's putting these like very close to each other, which is a concern. So another major concern we have is flooding, and I saw that it's noted in the notes for this that we have an existing problem. I will pop up a little picture so you can see what happens when it floods. So we have no gutters, no curbs, no nothing. It's just little ditches on the side of the road, and this is normal, what happens when it rains on our neighborhood. When they had the case for the townhomes at the front property, they were required to put in a more substantial stormwater system. In addition, my sister and I volunteer for the Adopt a Stream program. We've done that for years, and we sample the water of Theater Creek, which is the body of water that goes through this property. I'm concerned because it looks like they're going to put it into a tube, and we're seeing a lot of erosion back there. We've seen that since 2022. As far as I know, the last survey was done in 2021, so I don't think that this erosion is reflected accurately. And a lot of the survey markers are now in the creek bed. So finally, I'll just kind of read some things that were said in a previous zoning meeting regarding the land behind us. The last time someone proposed something, it was 10% less dense than what's being proposed now, and these are some of the staff notes. The proposed development will not impact the two adjacent apartment developments, but will significantly impact the single-family homes to the south. The tract adjacent to the single-family homes is a long, narrow strip of land and is not wide. It's about 200 feet, not wide enough to provide sufficient buffering after developing building pads and parking lots. Additionally, it says this 6.339 tract is projected low-density residential and is very long and narrow, which would be difficult to build apartments and provide any substantial buffering next to the single-family homes. The Cobb County Comprehensive Plan recognizes the single-family homes in the area and encourages the protection of the single-family homes along Daniel Drive. The proposed 6.339 tract is not, is not consistent with Cobb County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which recommends low-density residential adjacent to the single-family subdivision. The tract is very long and narrow, being only 200 feet in width, and would be very difficult to build, provide parking, and substantial buffering to the single-family homes. The staff would recommend that the 6.339 tract remain a buffer for the adjacent single-family homes. So I hope that you can take these things that I've said into consideration. And like I said, I'm excited for the growth in this area. I just would like to see it done mindfully. I did have a couple other pictures. So the apartments caught on fire in December, and I want to just show like how close we are to them. That's my neighbor's house. The tarp is the apartments there. Thank you. And then I just have some other pictures of the stream, but I don't know if I'll be able to really illustrate, you know, kind of what goes on back there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And you have a balance of a little less than four minutes, sir.
My name is Ken Daniel. I live on Daniel Drive. The rezoning from R20 to RM12 is not appropriate. This strip is very narrow. You're actually dealing with two different owners. You're dealing with four separate tracts of land. This should remain R20. Some of the objections to it, on the north side of this track are the Belmont Crossing Apartments. Those apartments were built over density. They also got a variation for the building setback. The building setback would actually go like halfway into those buildings. That's how close those apartments are to this track. And yet, for this development, I haven't seen anything where they're specifying. And yet, for this development, I haven't seen anything where they're specifying what the building setback is going to be for the Town Houses. It looks like they're trying to put it right on the property line, where you've already got apartment buildings that are far too close to the property line itself, so you're compounding that problem. On the south side, where it's gonna back up to the houses on Daniel Drive, usually for a transition to R-20, you have enhanced building setbacks. Here, they're reducing it to 25 feet. No landscaping between it. The Town Houses originally were gonna be two-story, now they're gonna be three-story. Why? Because they're dealing with a very narrow strip of land, and they're trying to cram these things into it. The Town Homes are shown being built on service drives and sanitary sewer lines that don't belong to them. Those sewer lines and the service drives belong to the Belmont Crossing Apartments. There are, there are recorded deeds for these easements. And in 2012, the Board of Commissioners approved these encroachments by the Belmont Crossing Apartments on this track. I know this sounds kind of bizarre.
You have a minute and a half. Go ahead.
Okay. What you see here is, the lines in purple are these sanitary sewer lines. I know that this sounds strange, but you've got the sewer lines for the apartments. These sewer lines are above ground, and yet they are showing that they are gonna build Town Homes on top of these sanitary sewer lines. And then you also, the part that is in orange, is paved service drives for the apartments. They're gonna build Town Homes on top of those easements for the service drives. How can you do that? That just doesn't seem legal. In addition to that, you've got the detention pond that is shown. That is insufficient. I own the property that is downstream from it. This past September, we had a heavy rain, and the area that flooded was about four times the size of this detention pond that they're showing. So my property is gonna end up being the overflow detention pond for this development. That's not right. I haven't seen where the state DOT approval has approved.
You're at time. Thank you. All right, this again is in District 3, so I will turn it to Commissioner Dance to lead our discussion.
Thank you. If I could have Stormwater come forward, please.
Good morning. Andrew Heath, Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you speak to the issues that were just raised about stormwater and the impacts of this particular proposal?
Yes, the applicant's site plan has been revised. However, it's, we presume that there's an easement along the creek. That actually would be determined by community development and erosion control, but presumably there would be an easement there, an easement, I'm sorry, a buffer along the creek. But just with respect to stormwater management, the site is a challenge because it's long and narrow, and especially its center third is rather steep. So presumably, there will need to be some walls and things like that to kind of pad out, you might say, the site to make it more, you know, appropriate for building the, the units on. Right now on the site plan, there isn't anything shown that really indicates how they would actually build the units in terms of, you know, how they would actually construct them or get the stormwater management to the detention pond. They will naturally, just like any development, they would have to meet our standard requirements. And one of my requests in the stormwater management zoning comments is to increase the amount of water quality that's provided for the site, because the site's currently a wooded site, and it's in a, it's in a drainage basin that's in, as was mentioned, is in that area between Marietta and Smyrna. It's an area of a lot of existing development where there wasn't a lot of stormwater management provided, and so I've asked them to elevate that requirement. And then specifically else, the other two parcels that you can see in the image that's on the screen on the far eastern side along Atlanta Road, it isn't clear how detention or water quality would be provided for those two distant parcels to the, to the north and east of the site as well. Not saying it can't be done somehow onsite, it's just the site plan doesn't really make it clear how that would be accomplished. But from a stormwater management standpoint, I think that's kind of the major nut of it. Oh, except for one thing, the gentleman who just spoke about being downstream of it, that was one of the other items that had addressed in the comments, and that is that the subdivision that is immediately south of this is a residential development, and like a lot of older residential developments, it doesn't have a lot of really well-developed storm drainage infrastructure there. And so we would want to pay a really increased attention to that when this came through, if the zoning is approved, to make sure that they're controlling their rates of runoff through the downstream development. And in fact, they may want to talk to the downstream neighbors. The owners of the property there were, like you can see on that exhibit there now, the revised site plan, where the pipe is discharging down there, to see if there's any remediation or if there's any thing that can be done to kind of, you know, improve that conveyance through their site. I don't think we would want to increase pipe sizes or anything like that, because that can generate its own problems. So certainly this site would have to manage its own stormwater runoff and, and control that. But as one of the side effects of controlling the runoff, if you provide more detention, you're holding that water back and releasing it over a longer period of time. And so if that water is running through the neighbor's property and things like that, that can kind of become a nuisance to the neighbors. So the neighbors downstream might have some benefit from having some, you know, additional attention paid to how that's gonna be conveyed through their site. So those are some concerns that we have that are raised in our comments.
Okay, so when you, when you indicate that the folks downstream would benefit from having some attention paid, is that something that's covered in your proposed stipulations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that would be that the responsibility be upon the developer to control that runoff in those areas?
Yes, ma'am.
And one of the, the speakers spoke to issues in that downstream neighborhood and showed us a picture of the site area after a storm. Is that consistent with what your understanding is of, of kind of how water issues are in that area now?
I think it's probably symptomatic of what that is. I'm not exactly sure where that photograph was taken, so I don't know if it was right in that area where, you know, this site is draining across the, the next downstream road or not, or if it was just adjacent to that. But certainly in developments like that, where you have a lot of open roadside ditches and things like that, that, that's very typical for that kind of development. And I don't know, depending upon where that photograph was taken, if that's gonna be completely ameliorated by having the detention pond there. But if, if there is a detention pond constructed approximately as they have shown there, it's gonna end up capturing a lot of debris and flotsam and things like that that wash into it. And that's one of the advantages of having a detention pond, and so hopefully that would help, you know, to prevent that material from continuing to go on downstream.
Okay, and I, I believe when you were speaking that you referenced this as being a wooded property. Is, is that the condition of the property currently?
Predominantly, I think so, yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi, Andrew. And one other question, would, do the standards still require a 10% reduction in runoff versus some baseline condition? Because I believe there used to be a standard where you basically had a condition where it was wooded, and you had to reduce the runoff by 10%. Is that correct, or am I misremembering that?
I don't know if that was a formal written requirement, or if that was just a request that was made for that.
Okay.
I had actually asked them to elevate their water quality requirement, which is the first amount of runoff that they're holding off. But typically, for just detention, they would need to control the rate of runoff from their site to not exceed the pre. And so if they're gonna be less, they're gonna be somewhat less than that. If it would be 10%, I don't know. So, but I didn't specifically request that.
Okay. But odds are, these interventions, if sized properly, would result in probably less runoff than existing conditions right now?
Yeah, because there's a large upstream drainage area above this site, when this particular site is developed, unfortunately, it's not going to correct all the, all the evils of the past. So unfortunately, there's, there's gonna be, just like there is now where it's wooded, they're already seeing a lot of runoff from the site.
Yep.
And so I suspect that that will continue, but at least our goal is that it should at least improve it somewhat and not, not make it worse than it is now.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
No, anyone else? Okay.
If I could have Mr. Moore come forward. Hello again.
Good morning.
So can you tell us what discussions have been had with the, with the neighbors as to this development prior to today?
We have not had any discussions with the neighbors. You know, we send out the letters to all property owners within 1,000 feet of this property, and so I presume they've received a letter from me, but I have not, nobody's contacted us as far as reaching out to us. I'm always happy to discuss and would be more than happy to talk with them and happy to meet with them. But prior to today, no. We've not received any calls or emails or
Okay.
Any information at all.
Would you be able to, to speak to their concerns as to stormwater runoff and, and those, those type of matters?
I, I can speak to them from a general standpoint, in the sense that, you know, we have reviewed the Stormwater Management Division comments that were made as part of this application. Those are the ones that Mr. Heath just reviewed with you. We've reviewed those and agree with the direction and comments and requirements that Stormwater would put in place here as a result of, of an approved rezoning. I think the takeaway for us is that Stormwater is asking us to have elevated stormwater requirements due to the fact that the neighboring residents and their subdivision, when it was developed many years ago, has zero stormwater management, other than, you know, roadside ditches, which is, which was how it was done. There was not stormwater requirements like we have today. As a result, we're having to increase our stormwater level of attention due to, due to that. So, and we're fine to do that. We understand that's the way it works.
Okay, and, and have you all considered a reduction in density of the property?
We have not considered a reduction in the number of homes that we're proposing.
Okay, and can you, can you describe for us how this section that includes 89 through 96, how that configures with the rest of the property?
Those are the two parcels
Yeah.
That are somewhat separate, separated.
Right. Are they part of this development? Are they somehow related to it?
They are. They would be a part of this development, yes.
Okay, and are they
I know they're separated, but
Are they related to it with some green space or some amenities or anything like that?
They're not, when you say, they're not connected because the apartment property sits in between them.
Okay, are there any recreational spaces on this property?
We have provided for, we have not provided for any type of full amenity for this project, correct?
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Heath, and then No, the road, the roads that are showing, are these public or private roads?
These are, these would be private streets.
These would be private streets.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Belong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a series of questions. Let's start with this. The suggestion was made that when the Belmont Crossing project was built, that this was part of it. Is that correct?
I'm not aware, one way or the other.
Do you know
I, I do know that this property is its own parcel, separate apart from the Belmont Crossing property, so that's how it's, that's how it is today.
Well, do you know how it was that Belmont Crossing got built at what you say is 19.56 units per acre when it was zoned for RM12? Do you know anything about that?
I do, I do not.
And you're not able to affirmatively state whether or not any portion of the property you're bringing before us was part of the Belmont Crossing application when it came before the board for, for zoning?
I could, I cannot confirm one way or the other, no.
Do you know whether or not, at present, any portion, any of the parcels that you're bringing forward for rezoning were part, were, were once part of the Belmont Crossing project? Any idea?
I do not, no. It wasn't relevant for me.
Do you know who the, you know who the current, it's very relevant to me. It looks like we're getting hit with a bait and switch here, to me. It looks like, looks like somebody brought this thing in for a certain zoning, and pieces are being cut out of it, and we're being asked to use an upzoning to upzone this when it was supposed to be buffer, basically. That's what it looks like's going on here to me.
Understand that, but also understand that this ownership of this tract and these properties are different than the ownership of Belmont Crossing. So if that is, has occurred, it occurred many years ago, not of recent vintage, as a result of this application.
Do you know who the present owners are of each one of the tracks you're bringing before us today?
I do.
Okay, can you tell me? Because I'll, I'll go ahead and run title myself.
Sure. The property owners are of what's being proposed for rezoning, the 8.27 acres are Land Acquisition Investments LLC and Park Lane Capital II LLC.
Okay, do you know how long either one of them has owned?
I, I do not. The application has copies of their respective vesting deeds.
Okay.
So it's in the application, but I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Okay, that'll be fine. Do you have any idea how it was that Belmont Crossing got built so far in excess of what was authorized by, by the entitlements?
You're assuming it was built in excess of what it was entitled to. Again, given their age, a lot of things happened when that apartment was, apartment complex was built, so I, I do not know. I just know that we can go around Cobb County and find, you know, a good, good number of apartment complexes that were built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s that exceed what they're zoned.
You think it's
Now, how this happened, I don't know. I could be right. It may have been zoned as part of it. I don't know.
You think Belmont Crossing is that old?
It's pretty old.
Okay. All right.
It certainly predates 1980. I'll put it that way. 1964, says Mr. Peterson, so.
Okay, so 1964 predates
Which predates
Predates their zoning code?
It sure does.
All right.
That's how it typically happened. But I don't know that, so I just, I don't want to convey information that I don't know, Mr. Belong.
Okay. Do you know if any part of the land you're bringing before us was part of the Belmont Crossing property at any time in the last several years?
I, I do not know.
Okay, thank you.
It's easy enough to check, but I don't, I do not know.
Kevin, I have one, one question. And it's kind of been, you've kind of answered it, so I'm not gonna ask you to answer again, but has there been any consideration for amenities or green space in the area? I mean, for, for the site?
There is, yes, there's been some consideration, but this is the, the direction that the applicant has gone.
Thank you, sure. Any other questions for Kevin?
If you can just clarify what that means, there has been some consideration. What is the consideration?
They thought about it, but have not included it.
Commissioner Anderson.
Kevin, just to go back to, I think, one of the members of the opposition, they'd, they'd asked for some clarification of the buffering. I think the stip letter had it at 25, and you had mentioned in your presentation 35.
Sure, I'd love to clarify.
Okay, so 30, we're assuming it's fair to say 35 is the number, or is there context around that?
There is. Let me clarify, because
Okay.
we have a 35-foot setback
Yep.
and a 25-foot buffer that's within that setback.
Yep.
So, you know, a setback's different from a buffer, which some people, if you're not, if you don't do this every day and every month, sometimes you don't know. But we have included a 25-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the Daniel Drive residents. That would be a fully vegetated, you know, evergreen planted buffer of 25 feet in width with a 35-foot setback, so that the townhomes are set back 35 feet from the line. Within that is a 25-foot buffer. If you do a 35-foot setback and a 35-foot buffer, it doesn't work.
And just to be clear, and there's no setback from the Belmont Crossing side from the north?
It's a 10-foot setback.
Okay. I just can't see it on here.
Which was the, that was the setback that was established when the board rezoned RM12, the acre and a half up front.
Got it. Thank you.
And I had one other question. Again, just related to addressing some of the concerns. Is it possible to have some kind of elevation which will show that setback so that we can understand kind of how it relates to the sites to the south? I think one of the members of the opposition, they'd said that obviously it depends on what tree heights you're planting and, you know, the height of the finished floor elevation. Is there any way that you can, your applicant can prepare that so we can see kind of what we're looking at in terms of moving southward, whether there, what type of tree and what kind of view buffering is being provided for the residents to the south?
Sure. I'm sure we can provide a cross-section, a profile, a cross-section that would show that. Sure. Be happy to. That'd be the way it would be done.
Right. And I understand it's a narrow site, so it might need to be one at the front, one in the middle, one
Correct.
And just kind of like different tranches of that.
Correct.
But I think that'd be helpful for me to understand kind of whether those, you know, as one of the members of the opposition said, there's kind of a visual towering of these developments there. And then one last question was, can you confirm whether this, we are indeed looking to build over the existing easements that run across from Belmont? That's what's shown on the site plan, but are, just wanted to kind of understand if there's a revision coming that would address that and just
Right. That's been addressed, because it's private agreements between two private property owners, we've addressed that with the Belmont Crossing apartments to address those issues. Those have been handled.
Okay. So I guess
In other words, the county doesn't get involved in private easement agreements.
Right. Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
From my perspective. But that's to answer the question, and I'm sure the gentleman's just not aware that that's occurred.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Is there, I'll just kind of put an observation out there. The use of the property as seen right now, it does seem intense. Is there, is it best and final? Has the property owner had a consideration for less than 96 units? Or is this the, this is kind of where they, I get this is where they landed now for this application, but in studying this property and pulling together an application, was there a consideration for a less intense use? And I know that's a weird question. I'm just trying to get
No.
Where is it at?
I believe that the question is, will we, if given direction, will we consider that and see what we can come back with? And the answer is yes. If this plan of commission provides direction, anytime I'm involved, if this plan of commission provides direction for us to look at and consider, then we'll make sure we do that.
Thank you. Further questions for Kevin? All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Back to you, Commissioner Dan.
Okay. At this time, I just am in, prepared to make a motion. I would move to deny the plan as submitted and deny the request for rezoning just due to the intensity, density issues and, you know, no plan that shows that it's a, that there are any amenities or green space or design with the adjacent area. I just don't think that it's compatible with the, with that area. So my motion would be to deny.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Bloon. Is there any discussion? Yeah. Commissioner Anderson?
I just want to reaffirm that, just to make sure I understand that, for Commissioner Dan, is there, do you feel like it's just a bridge too far to get to kind of a revised plan that would accommodate some of the recommendations proposed here? And that might be the case. I just
You're asking me to speculate, but if they want to, if they want to bring forward another plan, they can bring it forward to the board. I just think there's nothing to engage me to believe that there's a hope for, there's always a hope, but there's nothing to engage me to believe that there's something to reach for here, for, from our board.
Okay.
If that doesn't make sense, you can ask me a question.
No, I understand that.
But you're welcome to engage in dialogue.
I personally would err towards trying to have a revised plan that really contemplates the density as outlined in the staff recommendations. Just
Certainly, that's what I would be suggesting that happen at the next level.
Understood.
I heard the discussion. Commissioner Anderson, let me ask a follow-up question. Based on your question and based on staff's recommendation to delete to FST, are you making another motion or are you just getting clarification from Commissioner Dan?
Yeah. I was, I think that within, you know, the parameters outlined here, I see, my personal inclination would be to try to contemplate a site that reflects the stormwater comments, the site staff comments, and see if there's a version of that that could be brought forward here. But I also respect that that's also at the discretion of the board commissioners. But my personal stance would probably be that there are some opportunities, although there's a lot of density, there are some potential benefits to this, to reimagining this, particularly given some of the stormwater enhancements that are being contemplated here. And if there is a version that scales back to density and can address those, I would at least like to have the opportunity to give the applicant that. But I would not say that that goes towards, you know, recommending another motion. Just express that as an opinion that, you know, kind of where my stance is on kind of the discussion to date.
Okay. Understood. Any other discussion from our fellow commissioners? All right. Let's call the question. By a vote of three to, three to two, we recommend denial of Z61 as is. Thank you.
Okay. Next case is rezoning case Z3 of 2024. Ashwani Kumar Khara requests a rezoning from R20 to FST for a townhome community in land lots 35 and 38 of the 16th district. Property's located on the east side of Alabama Road and on the north and south sides of Lindsay Way. Earlier, there are six people here opposed. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for rezoning case Z3, Ashwani Kumar Khara? Okay. The applicant is not present, Mr. Chairman. So at this point, we could either kind of put this on hold and try to contact him, or, you know, the board can decide to have a hearing on it.
It's in District 3, so I'll turn to Commissioner Dan just to make sure I'm getting her wishes in.
We have six people here who are opposed. Correct. So I think they ought to be her, right?
All right. We'll hear the case.
Okay. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Yeah. Can he call? You can go and hold it, hold it, and go to the next one.
Okay. While they are getting sworn in, I have a question of, Mr. Peterson, I have a question for you. Is it, my question is, is it possible to contact them if we move on to Z6 and then come back to this case? Okay.
It's up to the board.
Okay. Let's do that.
Okay. So Gene, we'll go ahead and give them a call and move on to the next case.
So just to make it clear for those in the audience, because we definitely, we recognize the six that were in opposition, and we definitely want to give you a voice to be heard, but we're going to attempt to call the applicant for Z3. And so while we do that, we'll move on to Z6 case.
Okay. So we're going to put Z3 on hold for right now. All right. Next case is rezoning case Z6 of 2024. Inline Communities LLC requests a rezoning from R20 and R30 to R20 for a single-family home subdivision in land lots 1248, 1249, 1250, 1268, 1269, and 1322 of the 19th district. The property's located on the east side of Brown Road, north of Stout Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z6? Let the record show this, no one opposed.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this rezoning application for property located on Brown Road. This is a large tract of property. I'll show that to you here as part of the current zoning map. It's a large tract of property, nearly 150 acres located off of Brown Road. You'll see on the screen in front of you, see where Stout Park is located in close proximity, so it kind of gives you the idea of where this is on Brown Road, also just north of the intersection of Brown Road and Stout Parkway. But what's important about this slide to show you and to highlight for you is the property, which is the subject of this application, has zoning categories of both R20 and R30. There's a portion of the property in the middle, you see that's highlighted, R20. The remainder of the property is zoned R30. We are seeking rezoning to the R20 classification. When you look at this particular area and the surrounding uses and zonings, particularly the residential zonings, and I really want to highlight that for you because it tells really the story. This property on Brown Road, which is along the left-hand side, across the street from Brown Road is Brown Crossing subdivision. That's the R20 that you see across the street. That's Brown Crossing. That's R20. Also, kind of going in a clockwise circle from there, this property along the frontage of Brown Road is zoned R20. Joining properties are zoned R20 on Brown Road. There is a small piece that's zoned R30. There's another R20 subdivision along our northern boundary. South of that, along our eastern boundary, is an R15 OSC subdivision. That's an OSC subdivision that has less than 10,000 square foot lots that's under development now. You do have R30 properties, though, that front along Holloman Road, which is to the right, and that's where your R30s are. There's also a CS, which is Conservation Subdivision, that also has, which was a precursor to our OSC or Open Space Concept, that also has less than 10,000 square foot lots as part of that CS zoning. Then you have the R30s that are surrounding it to the south and southwest and southeast is R30. But this property itself is zoned R20 and R30. And what we are proposing, though, is a zoning to the R20 category. We have reduced our request. The initial application was for 188 homes as a result of our meetings with community as well as our discussions internally, as well as a result of really detailed review of the departmental staff comments and recommendations. We lowered the requested number of homes with revised site plan to 180 homes, which leaves us at 1.48 units per acre. To highlight again for you, this is in very low-density residential, which recommends densities from zero to two units per acre. R20, which is what we are seeking, has an average yield of 1.75 units per acre. We're at 1.48 units per acre. What I'm driving home is that this proposal is very consistent with the land use designation of very low-density residential. It's very consistent with the area. And also, I want to applaud the applicant and their engineering team and design team at 1.48 units per acre at R20. What you can tell by that is that they're not trying to max it out. They're not trying to max out this site, and I think that goes to part of the story as well. Turning to the site plan itself, now you can really see the more detailed level of what is being proposed for this tract. It's a total of 180 homes that's been reduced from the 188 that's originally proposed. Again, Brown Road's on your left-hand side, Holloman Road's on your right-hand side. We'll have two entrances, one on Holloman Road and one on Brown Road. The main entrance on Brown Road is a full-access entrance. The entrance on Holloman Road is a right-in, right-out entrance only, and as well as that then maintains that R30 view shed along and zoning along Holloman Road. Also, what we've provided in this tract is a highly amenitized proposed neighborhood and subdivision, think much more traditional. We don't see many of these large tracts like this anymore. We used to see them regularly in the 70s and 80s and 90s when these were being built across Cobb County. We don't see a lot of this anymore. What's being proposed is R20 subdivision, you know, half-acre plus minimum lot sizes. We're proposing absolutely no variances as a part of this request. In addition, it comes with a full amenity. That amenity will be located on the Brown roadside, where we have some really good space there. This property crosses a creek as part of its entrance before you even get to the developed portion, which will include a full amenity there. Pool, cabana. There's also pocket parks that will be throughout this development, as well as fairly heightened passive park element. What you've seen with this plan, you can see all that green area. That is Flood Plain, where this is. That is adjacent to Sweetwater Creek. That is the Flood Plain area, about 27 acres of Flood Plain area that lies along the southern boundary, along the southern portion of this property that's being set aside as part of Flood Plain, even though not required. It's being set aside that provides a tremendous opportunity for passive park amenities for future residents. We've also, as part of our discussion with neighbors, I highlighted for you where the R30 adjoining pieces are. We've increased our rear setback on any lots that adjoin existing R30 property. Instead of having a 30-foot rear setback, which is R20, we've increased that rear setback to 40 feet. Even though we won't be building to that line, we want to make sure there was an increased setback for adjoining properties to respect that transition between R30 and R20. Lastly, probably most importantly here for this proposed subdivision in terms of conditions that you see here, we see it a lot, but I think it's extremely important here. We are agreeable to and voluntarily agree to a 10% rental limitation that goes along with the Mandatory Homeowners Association. So there will be a mandatory HOA Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions, as well as a 10% rental limitation. As currently zoned, it's zoned R20 and R30. It doesn't have anything on the right-hand side. It doesn't have a guarantee of amenities. It doesn't have a guarantee of no rental. It doesn't have a guarantee of a homeowners association with mandatory covenants and restrictions, which all are extremely important, as you know, to maintaining value for not just the subdivision itself, but in the future. We also want to provide a view shed. I really think it's important when you consider this proposal, when you come in from Brown Road, this is a Brown Road view shed, and you say, well, look, that doesn't look like a neighborhood where all the houses. That's because coming in from Brown Road, there's a stream, and that's why it looks like a bridge, because it is. It crosses the stream before you even get to the houses. And we're providing for, as part of our stipulations, you see the really decorative fencing and arrangement and entrance frontage, so you can really see how this will be viewed from Brown Road as a true neighborhood and family neighborhood. Talking about our amenities as well, I wanted to show you examples of what this applicant Inline Communities has done in other neighborhoods that it has developed across the Atlanta area, including Cobb County, pool, cabanas, fire pits, open green spaces and fields for families to play and enjoy, but you can at least see for yourself the level of quality that this applicant brings to a project. Lastly, I wanted to take a minute to discuss stormwater. Of all the issues for this property in this area, stormwater is the biggest concern that must be addressed. And I say that it must be addressed. Sweetwater Creek, as you know, flooded heavily, mightily, in 2009. What we have done, though, as an applicant, what Inline and its engineering team, with planners and engineers, has done is be proactive. What we have done, though, as an applicant, what Inline and its engineering team, with planners and engineers, has done is be proactive. We identified the floodplain for this property, which I said is about 27 acres. I think it's also important that you keep in mind, but since 2009 FEMA updated their floodplain maps, which increased the floodplain in this area along Sweetwater Creek and impacted this property. It went three feet higher than the floodplain that was established prior to this time, which means we have property now, more property in floodplain than we did in 2009. One of our stipulations that we have included is that no lots are within any 100-year floodplain. That's important. Under R twenty, R thirty, R fifteen, under any of your standard zoning categories and ordinances, you can have lots that contain floodplain. You just have to make sure you have 12,500 square feet out of the floodplain. But you can contain it and count towards that minimum square footage. What we wanted to do here is make sure that no portion of any lot was in floodplain. That's really taken it to a next level in terms of stormwater management. This is not an OSC proposal where it's required. That's voluntary on behalf of the applicant and his design team. And lastly, what we have provided for in our stipulation letter is elevated reduction in stormwater discharge by designing to the next level of flood, next level or next year flood events. What does that mean? For example, our design and stormwater design is going elevated, meaning larger, bigger, ensuring that our detention and our stormwater requirements go beyond what the county requires. In this case, for example, instead of designing and building to a 100-year flood event, we're making that sure it's to a 50-year flood event and on, and so forth and so on. We've set that out here so that we have made stormwater our number one priority as well as part of this application. With this proposal, we think that the applicants, Inline Communities, will do an outstanding job. This is an outstanding example of a great design, and we respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, this is in District Four, so I'll turn it to Commissioner Hughes to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Chairman Vought. If I could have Stormwater come up, please.
Hello, Andrew Heath, Corporate Stormwater Management.
Good morning, Andrew. I think you've had, have you had an opportunity to see the revised site plan and then the proposed stipulations from the applicant? I think in a letter dated February 26th. And there were some specific stipulations that they included with regard to stormwater and just wanted to get your feedback on those stipulations.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, definitely. Having the lots, one of those stipulations being about having the lots outside the floodplain, or at least having enough of the lot area outside the floodplain. That's very welcome change to have all the lot area outside the floodplain. That's excellent. And definitely having the floodplain area on the site, that will be something that, keeping all the building out of that area, will definitely provide something that could be an amenity for the subdivision. So that would definitely be welcome. And the, I think the, the main item, I might add that, there we go, that's your site plan.
If I could get you to speak up just a little bit, it's hard to hear you.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry. So the, the site plan, as you can see there, it appears to show primarily two stormwater management facilities. One sort of down on the southeast corner and one more kind of in the middle of the site, adjacent to that stream. And a concern, a continuing concern, I suppose, that we have is that this site is, it's wooded now. And one of the other things that came from the revised site plan is that the applicant is proposing increased detention for the site to help manage runoff rates from the site. And that's greatly appreciated as well. I wanted to not overlook that. One concern we still have is that because, due to the, the rolling nature of the site, particularly in the, kind of the northwestern corner of the site and the kind of northeastern side of the sites. Those sites tend to drain away to the northeast and to the northwest and not back toward those two detention ponds that are to the south. So the site plan doesn't really make it clear if that those areas are proposed to be somehow captured in a storm drain system to go to the ponds. Or it might also be that you could have an additional pond in those areas to try to manage runoff, where the runoff right now in its existing condition wants to leave the site somewhere else. For instance, like on this site plan, if I direct your attention to that, that's on the screen, you can see there's sort of a flow path, a stream that's kind of along that very western edge of the site. So some of this site wants to kind of drain off toward that stream that's on the western side. And that's not going immediately back to where that, the detention pond is there in the center of the site. So potentially it, this plan doesn't really make it clear. Maybe they're proposing to capture that in some storm drainage system and bring it to these ponds that they're proposing. Or another option would be to somehow capture that area more locally onsite and provide an additional pond in that area to manage runoff before it leaves the property in that area. But that would be a, one continuing concern that we have. But certainly the revised site plan, getting the lots outside the site plan, providing increased detention as they're proposing, those are definitely welcome, welcome changes.
Okay. The, the question about capturing the runoff and making sure it gets to the identified stormwater facilities, when would you expect that matter to be addressed? Is that part of plan review, hydrology studies, what, what, what's included in your recommendations to get at that issue?
Yes. So the way we would normally approach it, if this site were just going to be developed, let's say, under its current zoning and they weren't coming before zoning for anything, then they would just be coming before plan review. So we would look at where the water, the runoff is currently leaving the site. And at each one of those locations, they would have to show that their post-developed runoff rates were detained to not exceed their pre-developed runoff rate. So if no further amendment to the site plan is made, that's what we would do at plan review. We would just address it at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Blount? No, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we heard about being designed to a 50-year floodplain standard. How often do we get 50-year flooding around here? Every two years or what? I was serious about that because I don't think that, I, I think those terms have become a farce.
Yeah. The, I think, at least as I remember, the 50-year term coming up is that here, the floodplain is based on the so-called 100-year or 1% annual chance flooding event. And that's, I guess, kind of roughly delineated by that kind of meandering line on the southern side of the property. But I believe what the applicant has done is they're agreeing to detain each storm event so that, for instance, at the, at our most stringent event, which is the 100-year or so-called 1% annual chance event, in the post-developed condition, they won't let that runoff rate exceed what would have been allowed at the 50-year event. And then the 50-year event detained to not exceed the 25-year event and the 25-year event to the 10 and so forth. And I think that may be what they were alluding to. But, but definitely our, like I say, beyond, if, if, if this case came before us for review without any zoning, they would have to design fully to the, you know, the 1% annual chance, the 100-year event. So we're not lowering our, our standard. That may have been a miscommunication.
So you want a higher standard than was proposed?
Yes.
Okay, good. And in response to my question, though empirically, do you know if supposed 100-year events are only happening once every 100 years or are they happening more frequently now in Cobb County?
Yes, they say like the, it's actually a little bit of a misnomer to call it a 100-year event. It's, it's a 1% annual chance flood. So any given year, we've got, it's like a lottery. We've got the 1% chance and it could happen, it could happen twice in the same year, but then it might not happen again for some time after that. So it's sort of a probability. But certainly you could definitely see it more frequently. It doesn't have to occur mathematically just once every 100 years. That's right.
Okay. And just looking at this plan that's in front of us right now, it looks like there are portions of the 100-year floodplain perimeter that do touch some of the lots. And I would presume would receive that water before it would have a chance to get into the adjoining stormwater facilities?
Yes, I understand. And as best I can tell, it seems like the, the actual floodplain limits itself, at least from this site plan, appears to be outside the lots. However, that issue of, like I spoke to earlier, of how you would address getting your actual stormwater runoff to the pond is something that would have to be addressed. And definitely those lots that abut near the floodplain or near the streams, they potentially, kind of like I was talking about, those areas that are in the northeast and the northwest corner, for instance. You know, that would be something they would have to figure out, either how to get it to the pond or how to somehow otherwise accommodate that in their, their hydrology studies so they don't increase the rate of runoff at any of their discharge locations onsite.
Are any hydrology studies being done or is anything being done now to address these issues to try to come up with a plan here that, that would address those issues?
To my knowledge, not yet. It isn't common, I guess, to go to that depth in the zoning phase. But certainly if you wanted them to explore it further, you know, certainly you could request that of the applicant. But typically at this point, we haven't really required that of them at this stage.
What, what other, what else would you like to see done here to mitigate any probability of downstream flooding?
Yeah, I think the biggest, really the biggest unknown, I think, from my opinion right now is in those areas, particularly, as I say, those larger portions of the site in the northwest and the northeast, that tend to want to drain off and not go to those ponds. That's still a little bit of an unknown to me. So certainly, there's, there's definitely a way to accommodate it. It might require, if this site came in, if I were reviewing it now and it didn't have to go through zoning at all, either they would have to have some way to show me how they were going to get the runoff to those ponds or some of those lots that are in those areas, like there in the northwest, for instance, where you can kind of see that stream buffer along that far western part of the site. They might have to not have a few of those lots and provide another pond or something in that area to capture that runoff and mitigate that before it runs off the property there to the west. So I think, just in terms of my biggest concerns, I think that, that's where I'm at right now is just the, you know, unsure of exactly how they're going to do that. I think if we were allowed the privilege during plan review, we could, we could accommodate that. But it's not really made clear, at least on this plan.
So would it be your understanding that those things would, the way the land falls now would drain through adjoining neighborhoods, but eventually get into Sweetwater Creek?
Yes, eventually, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Andrew, I've got one more question for you. In looking at the February 26th stipulation letter from the applicant, stipulation 15 refers to stormwater management. Ponds will be designed to increase volume. Then they go through stormwater ponds to design for reduction of flows from the study point, leaving the site as follows. And I'm just going to read a couple of these. It says, "Two-year storm will be reduced under the one-year storm flows, then five-year storm to be reduced under the two-year storm flows," and so on. It goes 10-year, 25-year, 50-year, and 100-year storm. Do you have any comment on, on that stipulation?
Yes. Yeah, that's a very welcome addition to the comments and appreciate the applicant offering to do that. That's not a requirement of the county in the county code, but that's going above what we require. And basically what that's doing is reducing the rate of runoff on the downstream less than what it is now. And the site is predominantly wooded now. So that's kind of from a storm drainage standpoint, that's the best that you can get. So to go beyond that and better retain those flows is, is going, you know, above and beyond what our normal requirements are. So that, that's greatly appreciated.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions for stormwater? All right, thank you.
All right, does anybody have any other questions of staff?
Not, not for staff, just one of the applicant, if I could.
Sure.
Thank you.
Back up, Kevin. Thank you. Go for it.
Just so I understand from your plan, looking at the area in the middle of what's in front of us, where you see stormwater facility, then 100-year floodplain delineation, there's a lot of other land there. What would that land be? What, what use would be on it? What, what vegetation would be on it?
So in the middle there, you'll see that there is, where you have a delineated stream with undisturbed stream buffers, as well as where the stormwater facility. And then you have the floodplain line as well. So areas that aren't within the stream buffer and aren't within the stormwater facility would either be left largely undisturbed. And this is what I was talking about in terms of the, the passive opportunities that are there. You see that you have a, this is designed, for example, to the left, you see that we have a street that comes down with a cul-de-sac before you get to that floodplain. That's a great launching point for walking trails and those types of things. So they just want to be very careful about how they plan those out. But yeah, so any areas that aren't within a undisturbed stream buffer or within the floodplain are, you know, will largely be left undisturbed or be minimally disturbed and then landscaped.
What are the now, are they grasses or pines? Do you know what's, what's there now?
It's largely just a mixture of wooded pines and those types of things there.
Correct.
And if, and if I could, I want to make sure, because Mr. Heath brought up a question, but he wasn't sure what's going to happen with the northwest area. And I do have an answer for that question if I could, because I think it's now been asked twice. And if I could just give a short answer. So what, Mr. Heath doesn't have the benefit of now, which he would at plan review, is the full set of plans, primarily the grading plan and the hydro, hydro report and studies and the final engineering. We do have the grading plan that we've looked at for this project, which is, which is done as part of this. Those areas, those are very deep lots. What will be actually graded and developed, where the houses will go. Our engineering team feels very confident that they'll have a stormwater management plan in place that'll be able to capture, just like Mr. Heath was saying, capture that water on those, from those places, from, from those spots where he was identifying the north and northwest and put those forward to the front, to the streets and into the storm drainage system. But we clearly recognize and have recognized that if we're not able to achieve that, then we'll have a detention pond probably in the location that Mr. Heath, or approximate location, that'll go there. At zoning stages, this is, this plan, while well-designed from a civil standpoint, is not full and final. We'd prefer to have lots shown where we believe we're going to have those and have a high level of confidence than not have them shown and have to, and try to come back later and add them. So, but we feel confident that they've looked at that issue specifically and feel very good about how that will occur through exactly what Mr. Heath was talking about. We have a manner which to capture that stormwater and get it to the street into our system.
And then my understanding was from your earlier presentation that all of the building lines for the lots were outside of the 100-year floodplain. But it, it just looks like from what's in front of us, there, there are one or two lots or maybe slightly more than that that don't quite meet that.
You might have to point out that the, what we've done is we've have a specific condition or stipulation that says no lots will, no portion of any lots will be located within 100-year, designated 100-year floodplain area. Now, if you see some of the lines that are close, that's just because you're seeing lines that are close. But this has been fully designed so that, that, that stipulation and condition can be met.
Do you know anything about historically, when, you talked about the floodplain moving like three feet?
Yes.
Over the course of, you, you know, the last time prior to that, that, that FEMA or the Corps or whoever does that came up with a determination of those lines? Do you know, that's over 30 years or 20 years or 10?
I, I couldn't answer when they do it or how often they do it. I do know that, you know, 2009, we use it as a marking point, meaning that's when the flood was here. I believe it was in 2017 that maps were updated, including this particular area. And the floodplain lining went up by three feet, meaning the elevation went further by three feet, which is a, if you think about it in terms of, that's over a large area. That's, that's, that's a huge adjustment from a floodplain standpoint.
Do you know how many of these lots, say the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain line was moved again by one foot? Do you know how many of these lots would be implicated?
I don't, but not as many as you might think. I mean, you're looking at this as a plan view. This particular property sits that the, it's a pretty good rise in elevation from floodplain up to upland. You know, the upland that's where, where it's buildable, so pretty good steep elevation is, for, for those purposes. You know, anytime you do that, start moving it, it of course affects it. But we, there's two things that are happening here. Number one, your finished floor elevation per stormwater requirements is three feet above, has to be all, always minimum of three feet above that floodplain elevation line. These will all be five feet or above that. So we're, even if it moved a foot, we'd still be well above it.
Okay. Don't want you to view me as a wet blanket. I appreciate many of the points you've made in your presentation. I'm just trying to make sure we do what we can to prevent anybody from getting flooded.
No, I appreciate the questions. And you gave a lawyer a chance to talk. That's, that's great, so thank you.
Yeah, just, just one more comment or question for Kevin. I know you've met with the community. Can you just quickly summarize what some of the concerns that were highlighted during your meeting? your meetings with the community, and how your development plan now addresses those communities' concerns?
Sure. I'd be happy to address that. Mr. Rice is here too, with Brown's Crossing Homeowner Association. I think y'all have seen him before as well. But yes, we held a community meeting. Mr. Rice was kind enough, we coordinated that through him. So it was a community meeting we held in the area, where we had not only representatives from Brown's Crossing, homeowners from Brown's Crossing, we also had homeowners that are there on Holloman Road, as well as along Brown Road. Had a good group, it's probably about 25 to 30 people. We met for an hour, hour and a half, and went through the plans and went through all the information, had a great question and answer and discussion, went very well. I think the, from a community standpoint, they had great questions. I think there was, to highlight it, stormwater obviously is a big issue for this area, and I think that that's why you had this applicant be so proactive, and not just meeting what stormwater's comments are, but going beyond that, like Mr. Heath said. In addition, it was really important for us to be R20 with no variances, to have the full, you know, minimum half-acre lots. Also, we have a good deal of, you know, internal buffering and fencing that we have proposed as part of this project with those owners was also a big, was also a big issue for them. But just walk, we just had a great conversation, is what you like to see, and it ultimately was represented in the stipulation letter, as a result of that meeting. It was a very productive meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rice may want to, I don't know if you want him to confirm that, that's up to the chair.
Are you okay with that?
You weren't sworn in though, were you? Uh-uh. No. But we're fine, we're fine.
Yeah. If you want to say something, you'd have to be sworn in. No, you'd have to be sworn in if you want to say something. Go for it.
But yes, it was a great meeting.
All right.
Okay, board, hey, how you doing? My name is Clint Thorne Rice, I'm the president of Brown's Crossing HOA. Been about a year or so since the last time I met with you guys. The last zoning that we had in my area, you guys, you approved a plan that was going to be very impactful for us. Now I'm coming, you say, okay, we are in full support of the development, we'd like to see this go ahead and go through, that's why I'm here. The plan is good, they came to the community. As you guys probably don't know, the developers are here, the developers, they're in the back, they are present. When we met, they didn't just send Kevin Moore to meet with us. The developers came, met with us, with their engineers. They were present. They're going to do, in my opinion, they're going to do what they say they're going to do, it's going to be beneficial to us. If these guys is coming in and they're going to build the ponds and do what they do, as far as with the runoff, that is going to be very impactful for the flooding that we have that exists now, because as it rains, it floods all the time. So the water has to go somewhere, because it's already flooding. So now if they're going to come in, build the development, and have the ponds there that is going to catch some of that rainwater, it is going to be beneficial to the development. Also, for them coming in and building a development, and not having the homes on top of each other, and having the restrictions that they're putting in on top of that, because we all know what's going on on Atlanta, that is beneficial to our community. So what I'm saying to you guys, you guys approved the last plan in our area that was disastrous, and you approved it. The fight continued, and it got killed in the next meeting on that vote. So we all know what took place with that, because it was all over the news. Now, I'm saying is, the same way you guys approved that disastrous plan in our area, approve the plan that makes absolute sense. There should be no question about approving it, because it makes sense. And you approved the one that did not make any sense. So that is my take on it. This should be without question, you haven't seen probably one, something like this in who knows how long, because everything that is being built in our area does not look like this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to you, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you.
John, if you could provide staff's recommendation for this case?
Yes, the staff did recommend approval, subject to the district commissioner approving the final site plan, the district commissioner approving the final house elevations, and then the staff comments that apply.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've had an opportunity to review the application, review the site plan, I've met with the applicant as well, to, the applicant's representative, I should say, to review the project, taking it into account, the requested zoning, and then the zoning that exists around the property in question, you have R20, R20, R15, OSC. It seems to me that the request is consistent with the zoning that exists in the area. Obviously, this is a flood-prone area of the county, and has been for some time. The applicant's willingness to include, I think, a stipulation in their zoning letter, or stipulation letter that goes, I think, to characterize what stormwater staff said over and beyond what is normally required from a stormwater standpoint, shows their commitment to addressing that issue, given the sensitivity of this matter in the area. So based on that, I am prepared to offer a motion to recommend approval of the application, subject to staff's recommendations, and the zoning stipulation letter dated February 26, with a couple of amendments to revisions. The first is stipulation number two, I'm sorry, number three. The residents within the proposed, residences within the proposed community shall have a minimum of 2,000 square feet instead of 18, I'm sorry, 2,000 square feet instead of 1,800. And then I'd like to include a stipulation 21 at the end. The proposed community amenities shall consist of a pool, fire pits, walking trail, cabana, pocket parks, or some combination thereof. And that would be my motion for my board, for the board's consideration.
I have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Not, let's call the question. And a vote of five to zero to recommend approval for Z6. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Board, we did hear from the applicant for Z3, Mr. Ashwani Kumar Kara, and apparently they had an out-of-state medical emergency, so they're not going to be in attendance today. Will not be here today.
All right, we'll hear it, since we have the opposition here.
Okay. All those who wish to address the board for resounding case, Z3, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, my name's Dewar Dwellchel, and I'm here to speak in opposition of this particular proposal. My family and I bought a house in Burnham Woods about eight years ago, it's an older subdivision built back in the 70s. And we bought a house there because we liked the ambiance of this area. Now this is in the very tip of northeast Cobb. My son's school bus turned around in Fulton County and Cherokee County, so that's where we are, right in front of Mountain Park. There are several older neighborhoods in this area, bigger lots, not huge houses, but, you know, okay. So we bought this lot and totally renovated this house, because we wanted this to be the house that we would live in until we couldn't. And my house is my favorite place to be in. I look out, I see a tree canopy, I see, if there's not too many leaves, I see the Blue Ridge Mountains up there, and I appreciate the fact that there is still some nature and some trees around my house. The piece of property in question is not immediately adjacent to my house, but it is to some of my neighbors that are here today. So looking out my window this morning, and thinking about what my home and what my neighborhood would look like if I were to see this wall of the backside of townhomes, it would be totally out of character with the reason that I moved there. There's nothing else around there that's just like this. I appreciate the work of the committee, or the group in determining that at every, for every criteria, that this should be denied. And it should be, you know, I'm able to take a walk in my neighborhood in the morning, we don't have sidewalks, but we don't have so much traffic. Lindsey Way, which you see right there, which would be the egress for this particular proposal, there would be cars backed up into Fitz, Bedell Way, Lindsey Way, trying to get out onto Raceway 92 every morning, where it would be impossible to turn left and very difficult to turn right. There's nothing like this in our area at all, it's completely out of place. I hope that you will consider the recommendations of your staff and deny this application for rezoning.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Gantshaw, and I live at the lowest end of Fitz Drive, so probably from where our house is to Alabama Road, Highway 92, there's almost a hundred-foot drop in elevation. My property does back up to this, and the little stream that goes through, goes through the corner of our property. Along the backside of our property, which would be the edge of the property in question, is where almost quite a bit of the stormwater drains from all of the places. Keenan Court and stuff comes downhill, goes behind our house, and it handles it well, because it's been doing it for 50 years, but it's, there's a lot of water that comes down through there before it actually hits the small stream. But our community is about 50 years old, with about 60 houses right now. It's diverse, with many different heritages, enjoying a peaceful existence, both young families, elderly families, homeowners, we do have some renters in our area. And we all interact with each other as needed, it's a nice place to come, and it's quiet. The neighborhood with so much density behind us does not fit with anything. And 20 years ago, this gentleman tried to rezone this area and put in 50 houses, and some of the comments were, the staff recommends deletion, subject to the following conditions, maximum density of 2.5 units per acre, single-family detached houses only, and all axes be from Lindsey Way. There is no sewers in our area, which is kind of nice. We all have our septics, and we take care of them, obviously you have to. I don't know how they're going to put 70 houses, much less 50, what they proposed before in an area that has no sewers. And we ask, we respectfully ask that you deny this request.
Thank you so much. That are all the speakers, I will turn this over to District 3, I'll turn it back to Commissioner Dance to lead the discussion.
Mr. Peterson, can we get your recommendation?
The staff did recommend this application be denied.
On what basis?
The type of housing that the applicant has proposed is not consistent with the housing in the area. All the housing that surrounds us is single-family detached residential. Number two, the density exceeds the future land use maps, limit of five units per acre. And also, they don't meet Fire Department Code, or, and also, they can't get the public sewer from this property. So those are all reasons why staff recommended it be denied.
And the statement made as, when contacted was what? By the applicant? What did the applicant tell us when contacted about his not, non-presence?
He's out of state right now, taking care of a medical emergency, and as the board recalls, you know, we did continue this from February because of a similar issue.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'm prepared to make a motion. And let me just ask you, Mr. Peterson, one other question. I mean, if he returned, he's eligible to withdraw it before, before it goes before the VOC, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So at this time, I would move to affirm staff's recommendation to deny this application, and the applicant will be eligible to appear before the Board of Commissioners.
Second. I have a second from Commissioner Bollon. Any discussion? Let's call the question. And a vote of five to zero to recommend denial of Z3. Thank you.
Okay, moving into land use permits on today's agenda, next one we're going to hear is LEP 8, American Protection and Tactical, request a temporary land use permit for gunsmithing and a federal firearms licensee transfers permit in landlots 168 and 169 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Friendship Church Road, north of Conley Downs Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 8? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward, be sworn in?
Thanks for hearing my comments today. Wasn't exactly sure what today was going to be like, because it's my first time being here, so just like to give you a quick backstory and be respectful of your time.
Yeah, just before you go into it, just give us your name and...
Yep, my name is Ricky Lanier. I am the homeowner at 975 Friendship Church Road, where this land use permit is filed. Two years from now, the end of 2026, I'll end a 35-year career. Been planning on starting a business at that point for many, many years now. At this point, I started building my, this home in 2020. One of the things I realized as part of the business plan that I had planned for 2026, 2027, was that I had no support when it comes to home security, home protection, design, and building a custom home. I wanted to incorporate a lot of those things into my new home, camera systems, you know, secure rooms, safe rooms, all those types of things that go along with having a secure residence. So as part of my business plan, I felt like I could start early in this, in a consulting business, now having gone through two years of building and planning my home, to do consulting work for folks that would be in similar situations like mine, start the company, start building a base, start helping them design and implement secure solutions for their home in the future. As part of that, we filed for a business license in 2023, incorporated our LLC in September, and got our business license. And as we were planning out and getting ready to start, we realized that having our FFL, our federal firearms license, would be very beneficial not only to the future plans, but to the current plans, to be able to support our clients with custom, anything custom-built firearms that they might use to protect themselves at their homes. Not everything that you buy off the shelf is very compatible for that, so we would want to offer those types of solutions as well as part of that consulting work. So we went ahead and filed for our FFL. We received our FFL in December of 2023. At that point, the... At that point, the investigating agent recommended that we probably talk to the Business License Division and Zoning Division about our license, because it was licensed as General Construction Management, which is kind of more of the consulting line. But since we were going to be dealing in firearms and we had a need to do firearm transfers and things of that nature, that we revisit if there's options to kind of reclass our business, something that more representative to that FFL license. So we did approach the Business License Division down in the county. He recommended that if it's what makes the ATF happy, we reclass to the gunsmithing. I have a 250-square-foot room in my basement that is going to be set up to manage this part of the business. My office not only saves to protect the firearms that we might have in our inventory for our clients while we're customizing them for them. That was all signed off and approved. We went to the zoning, the zoning recommended we file for a land use permit because we would have, in full transparency, we will have possible clients coming to my home to sign off on the transfers of their firearms or sign contracts that we may build with them and their builders, or that we may consent with their builders to help them do the process. So in full, we wanted to be full transparent, we wanted to, you know, be honest about the fact that we would have some clients coming to the residence, but 99% of the work would be done off-site at our clients' residence. All the consulting, all the land site surveys, all the things that we would do, the home surveys, would be done completely away from my residence. So that's why we're here today. We've asked for a special permit to have this gunsmithing classifications license where we can bring in our inventory. The clients will purchase the inventory via the e-commerce websites, they will have them shipped to our home through our FFL permissions. We would then do custom modifications for them in my office in the basement and then deliver them as part of the transfer to their ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. You may want to stick around close.
Sure.
This is District 1. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Blon to lead the discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lanier. If you could wait just a second. Let me start with the county. The county's recommendation on this is what, county staff?
It is for denial.
And the reasons would be?
That's primarily due to the number of clients and customers coming to the home per day and per week.
Where else near here might it be more appropriate to have this type of activity?
Well, typically, gunsmithing is what we classify what he does would be normally done within a commercial location zone, probably general commercial or community retail commercial.
Those things would exist on Dallas Highway?
Could be Dallas Highway or maybe somewhere along Cobb Parkway.
Let me go back to you. So you would receive parts by UPS or FedEx, things of that nature?
That's correct. Same as if you were purchasing something from Amazon or any other e-commerce website.
And you would ship by the same means?
We would, we have no intentions to ship anything. They would come to us, we would manufacture them, then we would transfer in person. The firearms transfer has to be done person to person, they have to complete their background check, they have to fill out Form 42473 required by the ATF. That all has to be done in person, thus the requirement for them to be, either I go to their residence or they come to my residence. Most of the time, that would probably happen at their residence. I just, like I said, I wanted to be honest. If a client wanted to come by and pick up the firearm at my home, I wanted them to be able to do that and be within the regulations and the zoning.
Have you looked into what it might cost you to do the same thing from a nearby business location zone as suggested by the staff?
I haven't done like a full detailed analysis of the cost, but all the real estate along Dallas Highway is quite expensive. You know, I've spoken to folks that I do business with, hairdressers and things of that nature, and their rents are pretty astronomical, but I haven't looked into a retail space that, and my ultimate goal in three years is to open a retail business. That would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 30,000 to 40,000 square feet. It would not only do firearms, it would do survival supplies, camera systems, all those types of things that would support my business. So that would be the long-term business plan that we want to ultimately get to, but until that time, we're just trying to build a business base. We're trying to, you know, advertise and do those things and again...
All right. Anyone else have any questions of the applicant? Okay. If I gave you the opportunity to withdraw this application and do some sort of feasibility study and go out and look at what it would cost you to rent a space to run this business out of, would you be interested in that opportunity?
I would certainly be interested in the opportunity. You know, until I retire, fully retire in two years, I just, you know, owning a building and a business isn't really part of the physical plan. I mean, I can just tell you that straight here and now. I'd be glad to put numbers behind it, but, you know, until I get to the point where I can fully function in support of this business, that feels like it's a stretch at this point. That's the only reason we are doing this now is just to get ahead, get in the business, get in, get our name out there, get advertisement, and then move into a retail space there in 2027.
Is that something we can do, Mr. Peterson? Can we allow him to withdraw this application without prejudice at this time and go through that analysis?
We could if it's his desire to withdraw it.
Okay. Would you like to do that at this time?
Sure.
Okay. That'd be my motion now. That he withdraw without prejudice.
Do we, you have to have a motion for him to withdraw without prejudice? Ask the staff. Do we, is that, if he withdraws without prejudice, is that something we have to vote on or he could just withdraw?
Yeah, y'all need to vote to allow him to withdraw without prejudice since it's seven days before the hearing.
Got it. Well, we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Let's call the question. A vote of five to zero will allow LUP 8 to withdraw the application without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is your, the non-agenda item you added to your code amendments to the zoning code, to be presented by Mr. Brian Johnson.
Members of the Planning Commission, just a reminder, this is a public hearing as to recommendations, to revisions to Chapter 134 of the Cobb County Code. This is a public hearing, so we'll need to open the public hearing up and allow for anyone who wishes to speak ample time after the presentation before you consider a recommendation regarding the item. Again, my name is Brian Johnson, I'm in the county attorney's office. We appreciate the Planning Commission adding this item to the agenda. It's for consideration, it changes to Chapter 134, which is zoning. The pertinent issue here is a change to the definition of club or lodge, which is private, being changed to non-commercial. And it has been a permitted use in residential classifications, but now slups required. So we're doing some cleanup that wasn't addressed previously in order to come into conformity. Form the requirements, we're adding some language regarding churches about impervious surface. Again, clubs and lodges, private have been a permitted use, and now we're changing to clubs and lodges, non-commercial, to come into conformity, to make sure that all parcels, all entities are treated the same under the SLUP process, so that one type is not given priority over another or preference over another under the code. These are the different, in Article 4 of District Regulations, the chapters and the zoning classifications that are being amended, as you can see there on the list. Again, this is just a cleanup, it's not a change in any process. So based upon the recommendation from the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners will take this item up on March 12th, and then again for the second public hearing on March 26th, which will be the proposed adoption. Again, you can see these changes are minimum, it's cleanup, they do not change any process, it just brings all of our code districts into compliance and conformity with one another. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or address them. And again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here that wishes to address them, they're welcome to do so.
You've got a big audience, Brian, but let me ask any of the commissioners if they have any questions based on the presentation. Nope. Is there anyone? There are a couple people, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And again, we appreciate a recommendation of approval as to these code amendments.
I have a motion to recommend approval of the code amendment as presented.
So moved.
I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Let's call the question. A vote of five to zero, we recommend approval of the code amendment as approved, as presented. Thank you. All right, we have a few minutes to get through. First, the minutes of the zoning hearing from February 6, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minute.
So moved.
All right. I just need a second on the minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of five to zero to approve the minutes of the February 6 zoning hearing. Next, the February 26 minutes of the special call meeting agenda review work session. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minute.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of five to zero to approve the minutes of February 26 agenda review work session. With that, all bases have been satisfied. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.